I will call a meeting of the Board of Alderman's Order, roll call please.
Alderman Borman.
Here.
Alderman Lee.
Here.
Alderman Magley.
Here.
Alderman Borra, here. Alderman Ward.
Here.
Alderman Wilkins.
All right, we have a form this evening. I've got charts from Alderman Wilkins.
He, he, he texted me.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
They're all. Consent agenda?
Well, do we want to officially, I mean, the agenda is put out. I guess do we want to adopt the amended agenda? That's okay, all right.
This, uh, this helps our.
Oh, you got the right one. No, this.
All right.
There is one correction on page fifteen.
Okay.
Like that. Don't anybody lose this. First in the bottom paragraph, Chairman Lee, probably I'll have Lee Allen Smith.
Mm-hmm.
Or just Smith or something.
Yeah.
Twenty minutes from page zero.
Right.
Could you say where that is again, please?
Right. On page fifteen. It's because the end's in one.
Yeah, no, I, I know where you're coming from.
I hear Chairman Lee, so maybe Chairman Smith.
Yeah. Actually, it changes that.
It's sorted, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd say Smith is probably the, yeah.
Okay. I didn't notice anything other than there being.
Yep.
All right. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Make a motion to second to approve the consent agenda as amended on motion to favor SAD.
Aye.
Close. All right. Accounts payable over twelve fifty. On page twenty-seven. Any questions on that? Feels over twelve fifty?
Make a motion that we accept the accounts payable over twelve fifty. And the amount of two hundred ninety-two thousand, four hundred four dollars and sixty-six cents.
Right.
Make a motion to second to accept the accounts payable over twelve fifty, the amount of two hundred ninety-two thousand, four hundred four dollars and sixty-six cents. All those in favor of SAD?
Aye.
Close. All right. Comments from citizens? Any kind of comment? Very good, fellow citizens. Economic Development Report from the Chamber of Commerce.
There is a small report in the packet we haven't met this month, we will meet tomorrow.
Right.
Both of us getting ready for questions.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. Public hearing, there's nothing scheduled. There's still a case. Still a case. Finance, same thing. Promax license is non-scheduleable. Legal. Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Harbor Consulting LLC to provide consulting services to assist with negotiating a multi-year power supply contract. This is a one that requires two readings.
We discussed this briefly at the, uh, Public Utilities and Public Works meeting a couple of weeks ago. Um, the board approved very similar contract in September of two thousand nine. This is a five-year extension essent- essentially of that contract. We're looking at making a five, we're, we're looking at making a purchase of three or more years of, uh, of power. If we can get pricing out that far, maybe, maybe up to five. Bob is, uh, Bob Harbor, who's most of the company, has submitted models of our demand, long-term energy requirements and the load factor, et cetera, for the next, uh, several years. Well, we're, if we approve this, uh, if we approve this, his plan, um, this will serve, if, if we approve this contract, this will serve, uh, as a basis to put the group together to develop an RFP. That's first, the first step is to develop an RFP to look for long-term energy prices. Um, we've been with Ameren, there are others out there. We've been with, uh, a company that was at once Ameren Marketing, then became Illinois Power Marketing, it's now Dynergy. But, um, that's what we've done our long-term air, power purchases from. Of course, our, the last mile, as it were, of our, our power comes from Ameren Power Company. But, uh, so this, these, uh, uh, so that we are, we'd be in a block purchase with Hannibal, California, Marceline, Cahoka, ourselves. California's a new addition. Uh, in this group, we are about nine percent, actually, with the new, with the updated numbers from California. California's a little bit larger than us. Of course, our, if we added in, um, Hubble, we'd probably be larger than that. Um, so that, the first step is to get to, you, you could be a consultant to help us develop a, a, a RFP for the group and then analyze the results. Um, con- contract ends in May of two thousand seventeen, so we're way ahead, there's not, there's no, there's no rush yet, but it takes a long time to go through this. And you don't want to be purchasing in a week before you.
Right. And that's a weird deal, certainly a weird deal. Okay.
So I just asked the Board of Alderman to approve the contract.
Alderman Borra, would you introduce this one, please?
Sure. Bill number? Two seven two seven. Move that bill, bill number two seven two seven, be given its first reading by title only.
Have a motion to second that bill number twenty-seven twenty-seven be given its first reading by title only, all those in favor of SAD? Aye. Close. Continue, please.
A bill to create an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk of the city of Centralia, Missouri to execute an agreement with Harbor Consulting LLC of Springfield, Illinois to provide consulting services related to negotiating a multi-year power supply contract. I move that bill number twenty-seven twenty-seven be given its second reading by title only.
Clear. Have a motion to second that bill number twenty-seven twenty-seven be given its second reading by title only, all those in favor of SAD?
Aye.
Close. Continue, please.
A bill to create an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk of the city of Centralia, Missouri to execute an agreement with Harbor Consulting LLC of Springfield, Illinois to provide consulting services related to negotiating a multi-year power supply contract. I move that bill number twenty-seven twenty-seven be adopted by roll call vote.
Have a motion to second that bill number twenty-seven twenty-seven be adopted by a roll call vote, all those in favor of SAD? Aye. Close. Roll call vote please, sir.
Alderman Lee.
Yes.
Alderman Magley.
Yes.
Alderman Borra.
Yes.
Alderman Ward.
Yes.
Alderman Borman.
Yes.
All right, by your vote, bill number twenty-seven twenty-seven passes and now becomes ordinance number?
Twenty-seven eighty-seven.
Naming the street through City Recreation Park as Janey Enlow Lane. A, a setting, a new speed limit for the street. This is also ordinance, requires two readings.
Uh, the, um, we got a request from the park, uh, director and after a discussion at the park board meeting to name the street which, uh, goes, uh, east, southeast, I guess, from Head Street and connects with, um, Booth Street approximately opposite Orchard. To name that street, uh, Janey Lane. Um, the original, um, was the original request. The, uh, I talked to a nine-one-one today and they prefer that we not name it Janey Lane or Janey, uh, na- name it Janey, because there's already a Janey Drive or Lane in Hallsville. And their concern is that when calling it out over the radio, that Janey and Janey is, um, too similar. And an ambulance destined for Hallsville would end up in Centralia or something like that. So I talked to Jim Enlow tonight and he's, uh, fine with naming it Janey Enlow Lane, uh, for that stretch of road. And, uh, King County G I S is fine with that, uh, nine-one-one is fine with that. Um, the, uh, the park, the, and so the park board has not actually taken a, made a motion about this. Um, but, uh, my indication, my understanding is that they're very, they discussed this and they're very much in favor of the idea.
Okay. All right. Alderman, would you introduce this one, please?
Sorry.
Go on, please.
Twenty-seven twenty-eight.
I move the bill number twenty-seven twenty-eight to give this first reading by title only. Have a motion to second that bill number twenty-seven twenty-eight be given its first reading by title only, all those in favor of SAD?
Aye.
Close. Continue, please.
Uh, a bill to create an ordinance entitled, an ordinance to name the na- uh, the now unnamed street through the City Recreation Park in the city of Centralia, Missouri, Janey Enlow Lane. Commending section eighteen dash thirty-three of the Centralia City Code concerning the speed limit of Janey Enlow Lane. I move the bill number twenty-seven twenty-eight to give it a second reading by title only.
Clear. Have a motion to second that bill number twenty-seven twenty-eight be given a second reading by title only, all those in favor of SAD?
Aye.
Close. Continue, please.
A bill to create an ordinance entitled, an ordinance to name the now unnamed street through City Recreation Park in the city of Centralia, Missouri, Janey Enlow Lane and commending section eighteen dash thirty-three of the Centralia City Code concerning the speed limit of Janey Enlow Lane. I move the bill number twenty-seven twenty-eight be given, uh, be adopted by roll call vote.
Second. Have a motion to second that bill number twenty-seven twenty-eight be adopted by a roll call vote, all those in favor of SAD?
Aye.
Close. Roll call vote please, sir.
Alderman Magley.
Yes.
Alderman Borra.
Yes.
Alderman Ward.
Yes.
Alderman Borman.
Yes.
Alderman Lee.
Yes. All right, by your vote, bill number twenty-seven twenty-eight passes and now becomes ordinance number?
Twenty-seven eighty-eight.
Purchasing. Approving the purchasing materials for extending water service to Cobblestone Lake Estates, Platte Three.
Mike Forsy asked that we approve a, uh, basically, uh, the amount, well, he doesn't have an exact amount, but gave him the authority to go get bids and purchase equipment and, or purchase materials, sorry, excuse me, to extend water service to Cobblestone Lake Estates. Um, we have the plat, uh, presented to the Planning and Zoning Committee Commission on Thursday. I have some notes about, uh, changes and, uh, when we get to that, one of the things we might consider that, that the board might want to consider related to Cobblestone Lake Estates is recessing the meeting rather than, uh, adjourning the meeting. So if we could consider this as early as a Saturday when we have a, uh, planning meeting.
Right.
The, he, uh, estimated the materials to co- cost, um, at, at, at the highest twenty thousand dollars for all the extended pipe. And that's giving us a lot of room. Should be significantly less than that.
All right. Any questions, brother in the discussion?
Are these the, uh, bids that we have in here?
No, no, he has that, he's that, he hasn't got, uh, wait, no, let me see.
Okay.
Seven hundred and nineteen thousand two hundred?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, those are, sorry, all right.
Water and sewer supply is one, the lower one. And the other one is from H D Supply.
And that should be, that should be enough, but he asked for just a little bit more. I mean, I guess, like, oh, you know, I, um, I guess if we approved the amount there, we should be fine.
Well, we don't have a ordinance in here, did we?
No, this is just to give me the authority to.
Okay.
Go ahead. These aren't, these aren't. It's, it's not, we didn't send out an RFP or have a contract, it's just to, since it's going to be significantly over twelve fifty, we thought it'd be better to go out and.
Okay, so we did a motion to.
Yes, exactly, the motion will, will be fine.
All right, I make a motion that we accept the, uh, bid from, uh, Water and Sewer Supply in the amount of, uh, nineteen thousand, two hundred ninety-one dollars and seventy-five cents.
Second. Have a motion to second to accept the bid for materials from Water, Water and Sewer Supply in the amount of nineteen thousand, two hundred ninety-one dollars and seventy-five cents. All those in favor of SAD?
Aye.
Close. Okay. Motion carries. Purchasing to replace a furnace for the community room area at City Hall.
We had a, just a, uh, routine inspection of all our heaters and we were, we had Hancock come in and, yeah, Hancock came in and took a look at them and found that the, uh, for, actually, we were having a little problem with thermostat. But when he looked at all four of the, we have four furnaces in this building. The one that serves the community room, he found it was the, uh, uh, the heating unit was, um, rusted out and needed to be replaced. So he gave us a bid and that was a suggestion of the mayor, actually. We went out to get additional, uh, quotes or bids for the, for the replacing that heating unit. Um, we received, Harper's came in and said they could not do it. Um, I, we talked also with Brown and they were going to try and get out last week, but they were not able to get out. So we have only two, um, bids in front of you. The lower one being, uh, from Robinson Heating and Air. Like the unit, uh, proposed by Hancock Refrigeration Heating, it is a, uh, it has a stainless steel heating element. Um, the, uh, heat exchanger, excuse me, for, and, and this is, would prevent it from rusting, or at least, it would take a lot, lot longer for it to rust. So I'm recommending that we accept the bid of Robinson Heating and Air at two thousand four hundred seventy-five dollars and, uh, install that unit.
I assume that in all respects, these are equivalent?
As, yes.
About two hundred five thousand E P T's. I looked at that part number from the Lennox one. That's an eighty percent efficient furnace. That was, that was going to be my question on the Sterling brand from Hancock. The same efficiency rating or?
Um, that does not.
I would think it would hurt someone.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion that we accept the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, Robinson Heating and Air for two thousand four hundred seventy-five dollars.
Second. Have a motion to second to accept the bid for a new furnace from Robinson Heating and Air in the amount of two thousand four hundred seventy-five dollars. All those in favor of SAD?
Aye.
Close. All right. All right, authorizing the mayor to enter into agreements with Charter Communications Entertainment LLC and Charter Advanced Services LLC to switch internet and phone service at the City Hall and the police station.
In our investigations to deliver a longer-term solution for phone, um, service or phone, for a phone system, P V X, we discovered that there were some, also some better alternatives for the actual dial tone into the building and internet service. The, uh, current internet service, and Heather, can correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's five, uh, kilobytes per second down and half up, or something very close to that, but P S L serves, maybe it's three. So this, this, uh, or maybe it's three, you know. Um, this, uh, internet service would give us sixty mil.
Increase our speed substantially.
Yeah, it's twenty, twenty percent, or twenty fold. And, uh, the, uh, eightfold, well, yep, uh, loading up, which may not seem like it's important, but anything, any information you want to come in, you have to be able to send information out. And when Heather's uploading our council meetings and other, other videotape meetings, it will.
Boges the system down.
Boges the system down.
It, it bogs the system down and it literally takes sometimes two to three hours to upload a video. And that's not using the wireless connection in here, it's actually connected.
It's a hard mart, right?
Yeah.
Wow.
As far as the phone service, um, the dial tone provided by a sentry link is fine, but this service would be cheaper and we believe it would provide just as good service. I don't know that we, but, uh, we, we, um, could save the city conservatively, um, somewhere in the neighborhood, I think our bills right now are about twelve hundred dollars a month, if you put all that together. We think we can shave hundreds, maybe five hundred dollars a month.
Okay. Is, is this going to be, uh, is this also going to replace the phones?
No.
Or just?
No, no, this is just a service and that's just the.
Okay.
This, we're going to have coaxial cable coming in instead of having, uh, a.
Top wire.
Yeah. Upper, you know, little phone wire. It will, it might give us additional options for what kind of a service we can, we can get, um, for phone service. But it will, uh, it won't, uh, it isn't the phone system with the mail, all that stuff, that's a separate purchase.
I think if we're to save money on the phone system, uh, it's moving in the right direction, so. All right.
It, we also, it also gives us, uh, long-distance service as well. Right now, I think our bills are about a hun- it, we're, we're not paying that much, but we're paying, I don't know, a hundred and fifty dollars a month for a phone, long-distance service. If we go down to forty, it'll be a flat rate.
All right.
Up, up to two thousand minutes of long-distance service. If we get over two thousand, we bet, we can, we can look at that with some policy.
Okay.
And I, I'm probably use as much as.
Do, do you know how much we're using now? How many minutes a month we use?
Um, I think, uh, combined, it was somewhere near, I think, I think a high month was thirteen hundred milks.
Okay. All right. Alderman Ward, would you introduce this one, please?
Bill number?
Two seven two-nine.
I move that bill number two seven two-nine be given its first reading by title only.
Have a motion to second that bill number twenty-seven twenty-nine be given its first reading by title only, all those in favor of SAD?
Aye.
Close. Continue, please.
A bill to create an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and the city clerk of the city of Centralia, Missouri to execute agreements with Charter Advanced Services Reserve LLC for the City Hall and the Police Station for phone service and Charter Communications Entertainment LLC for cable television and internet services for the City Hall and the Police Station. I move that bill number twenty-seven twenty-nine be given its second reading by title only.
Clear. Have a motion to second that bill number twenty-seven twenty-nine be given a second reading by title only, all those in favor of SAD?
Aye.
Close. Continue, please.
A bill to create an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and the city clerk of the city of Centralia, Missouri to execute agreements with the Charter Advanced Services LLC for the City Hall and the Police Station for the phone service and Charter Communications Entertainment LLC for cable television and internet services for the City Hall and the Police Station. I move that bill number twenty-seven twenty-nine be adopted by roll call vote.
Have a motion to second that bill number twenty-seven twenty-nine be adopted by a roll call vote, all those in favor of SAD?
Aye.
Close. Roll call vote please, sir.
Alderman Borra.
Yes.
Alderman Ward.
Yes.
Alderman Borman.
Yes.
Alderman Lee.
Yes.
Alderman Magley.
Yes.
All right, by your vote, bill number twenty-seven twenty-nine passes and now becomes ordinance number?
Twenty-seven eighty-nine.
Right. Thank you. All right. Any old business?
I do have a question. On this, they'll just leave our present phone system, our phones in place, they'll just create a new connection for them?
For now.
Idea.
For now.
For now.
And we might look at, we have, we, we do not currently have a handset in this room because it had to be, it, it went, went to replace one that died in the, in the police station. If we feel necessary, we could, they are out there to replace individual units, especially if another one goes down. In the next, we're, we're working on developing an RFP to go out and buy a new phone system, which will have some. You can't buy one today that does as little as ours does. Not, not that it wasn't a great system when it, it came out, but it has now been surpassed.
Right.
And, uh, and Bob Bias has been work, done a lot, a lot of the work on this. Um, so I just wanted to thank the chief and for his staff. Putting the, uh, putting this as.
Kind of an effort in there.
Because it looks like we're going to save some money that wouldn't have happened if they hadn't.
All right.
We're, we're going to spend it when we buy the new unit.
Right. Any, uh, any additional old business? New business? I don't have anything at the moment. Any Alderman have any new business? All right. Matt?
On last Thursday night, we had a meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. We had one major piece of, uh, we, we had some, uh, business about electing a new chair, but a major piece of business was the, uh, final plat of Platte Three from Cobblestone Lake Estates. Um, we, uh, I, we, the, the board, the committee, or the commission asked for six things to be done before we approved the plat. With having a meeting on Thursday night and having to get agenda out the next day, getting the ordinance written, the memo to, uh, to, uh, Darren and, uh, Darren Adams, who's here with us today, and Dave Peebler, who's been doing the engineering work. We didn't get it all ready in time so that we could give you something that you could adopt tonight. However, we've got, uh, the, uh, requests, uh, I sent Dave out a copy, did he get that to you?
Yes.
There, with, there was a couple of things after I got, after, uh, Mayor and I got done talking, which were very, very minor, that didn't get on the final version, but I'll get that to you today. But basically, six things were requested by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, the most recentest version of the memo, uh, uh, it state, the first, first recommendation, summed up best, as I say, the final version of Platte Three shall specifically note that lot forty-eight is the common area described in the lake easement, uh, in the already recorded Declaration of Covenants. Version I provided at the, uh, Planning and Zoning Committee was, and was not, I was not aware, was the one in the file, but it was not the final recorded document. So by putting it that way, by specifically asking it for it to be, to reference that lake easement in page four, paragraph forty-five, page seven of the Declaration of Covenants, as it were recorded in two thousand nine, in book three, thirty-five to seventeen, page sixty-three. Um, and that this, this lake easement is going to remain in the ownership of the Cobblestone Lake homeowners association. The second recommendation was, um, to edit the covenants to make sure they, they were, they'd mention, the, the original covenant mentioned lot forty-eight. The final version that was filed did not. So the second recommendation that it makes sure that we know that lot forty-eight is, is, uh, the lot that we're, uh, accepting with this plat. If, if we do what we have, if we have the, if we do the one on, uh, recommendation one, makes a second one. Then all, yeah, it just doesn't, it wouldn't make any sense, so it's really, it doesn't make any sense. If they do that first recommendation, note that this lot forty-eight is the one that they were talking about when they recorded that easement. That should take care of it.
Okay.
Um, the final version of Platte Three shall reflect that the plan, Chairman of Planning and Zoning Commission for the city of Centralia, Missouri, the time of approval is Lee Allen Smith and city clerk is Heather Russell. These are, just, I mean, when they put the thing together, uh, there was, I don't know, they were probably putting together with Pat Olson.
Right.
With, with Pat Olson's list on the document, that should be changed. Um, the final version of Platte Three, um, we, we're asking for, um, oh, the final version of Platte Three should show the drainage easement between lot thirty-seven and thirty-eight as twenty foot, I guess, that's sixteen. But I talked to, um, Dave Peebler that, after the, that night, Thursday night. Apparently there was, and I don't want to speak for you, but there was a little. Apparently there was, and I don't wanna speak for you, but there was a little confusion that each guy thought the other guy was gonna be at the meeting Thursday night or something like that. So that's why they didn't have anyone at the meeting. Talked to Dave that night, sixteen feet is what Columbia requires, just as we talked about that, that evening. And so that was just a carryover. The rest of the drainage easements in the subdivision are twenty feet. So, um, that one should have been twenty feet. Now, this, this was all on the plat that we sat down and looked at the department heads, but I didn't catch that one. So, but it should be a twenty foot easement. Uh, and then we talked about during, when Darren and I sat down and talked with, uh, Mike Forsy and, and, uh, Mark Mustaine, and then Bill Hoffman came in and looked at the lot, the plat also. A, an easement along the north, uh, property line of, uh, lot twenty nine would, um, give us the ability to put in a loop the water system. So one of the recommendations was that, uh, show a ten foot utility easement along northern edge of lot twenty nine and then an additional ten foot on the south part of what is now part of Danville. To give us a twenty foot water line utility easement. And then, um, a, the last, uh, last one that, uh, uh, la- last request was that, or the rat, last condition that the, uh, planning and zoning commission put on it was a temporary turnaround bolt, uh, constructed on the adjoining property. Darren owns, or is you a owner, I know Darren is all part owner of the, or at least part owner of the subdivision just to the north of that. So it is possible to get that done. But that, he doesn't have to buy anything from anybody else, it's possible to, to do that. And then there's some other minor edits that didn't get, uh, brought up during the planning and zoning commission. And these are just typographical errors, little pieces. There's a couple of different places where it refers to plat book forty three, page eighteen, but it's actually plat book forty three, page nineteen. The, I didn't catch that. That was, that was Merritt, you noticed that fine detail. And then there's, uh, you have the, uh, I give that, the, okay, I might go grab it, but there's a couple of different places on the map where there's a, uh, south and, uh, south and east or, south for north and east for west. And then the final thing, um, is in the document, it mentions the Calveston Lakes, in, in the recorded easement, the Calveston Lake Neighborhood Association, it was, it was described in paragraph thirty nine and then in paragraph forty seven of those recorded covenants, it said that will be created by December thirty one, two thousand twelve. I did a very quick search of the secretary of state's website and couldn't find that the association had been incorporated. We'd like to see proof of that, we wanna see proof of that for, at, at some point, because twenty years from now, when none of us are here, that there might be a request from that neighborhood association for somebody to do maintenance on that. And we just wanna make sure that there's an association in place to take care of that. And that it's not, you know, it doesn't fall on the city. Unless the city decide, you know, it's twenty years from now, but we would like, we wanna make sure that association that's supposed to do the maintenance on this, this is, is actually, you know. That's, that's our. And Darren's here to read by.
Are we gonna go ahead and approve this on Saturday?
That would be.
I, I would like to, there, there's a, one question I had, and if it's a absolute must, I mean, we'll do it. We would prefer really not to do the temporary turnaround for the simple fact that it's gonna kill a bunch of trees. And we've kinda cleaned out the backside there and things, and we've kinda left the trees that we'd like to leave barring this point in time, not knowing exactly what's gonna go on, um, and just the extra expense. You know, quite honestly, the, every year that we've had a temporary turnaround, which would have been in phase one and in phase two, the city guards trucks never turned around in anyways. And, uh, you know, being that Southwest Country Estates doesn't have any temporary turnaround at the, uh, at the west end of their property. Um, you know, we kinda had the same situation there, it's what they do with a street that just abruptly stopped at the end of the property line. So that's the only thing that I would, that I would ask is.
How, how long is that street?
Uh, that section of the street, I don't have the plat in front of me, I wanna say it's two hundred feet.
The one, the one we looked at Thursday night was like three hundred and thirty, something like that.
About three hundred and thirty, yeah.
Do you know about how long the one in the other subdivision is now?
I wanna say it's.
It's a hundred and fifty. It's in a hundred and fifty.
Around a hundred and fifty.
Yeah. Cause we, we did discuss that.
Sure.
At quite, quite a length. And I think, you know, with buses or.
Hey, you know, quite, well, the buses don't go in there. Buses are on their no chance only. And, uh, not at least at this point in time, there might be a time down the future where they go in there, but at this point in time, they drop all the kids off at the one entrance, they get no chance, and then they walk to wherever their house is. Um, you know, I don't know if it's, you know, it costs around four thousand dollars to put in a temporary turnaround. And, uh, you know, to service a trash truck that's not gonna use it anyways.
Yeah. I mean, a hundred and fifty feet versus three hundred and thirty feet, you know, I, I don't know if the trash trucks would use it.
And, and like I said, I'm not sitting here stopping my feet saying, no, we're not gonna do it or anything. I'm just, you know, I'm kinda going off, off past examples and things and saying that, you know, if we don't have to, I prefer not to have to, just four thousand dollars and rocks is a lot of money.
I, I don't disagree with, uh, with your logic on that. Uh, the question I have is, you know, on, uh, Southwest Country Estates, it is, you know, there are two lots on the one side, one on the other. The depth is actually a little less than a hundred and fifty, it's a hundred and thirty five or something there from the actual, uh, street right away line. But that's not nearly as far as what it is out here, which is about something over three hundred feet is what we were looking at. And that's, that's why we were looking at that is because.
And I understand, I think you're, you're looking at the same number of rooftops even though it is more feet. Uh, you're, you're still looking at basically the same amount of lots, because the lot that faces, uh, the very last lot, which I, I don't even remember the number, I wanna say it should be twenty seven.
I think it's twenty seven nine on the rock.
Yeah, faces Hampton, so you have the, you have the back lot, you, you basically have three residences that are gonna be back there. And, and so you've got the same number of rooftops and things, so it's not like you're.
What's the width of those streets out there?
Thirty two foot back, curved to back, it curved.
On, on that one, it's gonna be thirty two?
Yes.
The others are narrower, right?
No, the others are thirty two.
Oh, they are pretty.
Now, I believe, if I remember correctly, the cul-de-sac was twenty eight, just through the stem part, but then the bolt part is the.
Like, we can, I, I mean, I wouldn't, when I showed it to Phil, I, and I don't know, I mean, I don't, I haven't watched, there's probably some drivers who don't use cul-de-sac bolts, I don't know that, that, that none of them do. We had the same discussion about whether people use sidewalks.
Sure.
But, uh, but Phil didn't like the idea of backing his, his trash truck or his recycling truck trailing down. So, I mean, I, we can, we can work around anything, I just think it's, it's, I mean, I, I, I don't know if that rock's gonna be of any value. He showed us a, kinda a sketch, it had absolutely no legal binding.
Yeah, no.
It, it has no value, right?
No value, there is a possibility.
And if that, if, if I do go ahead and do that back part, that will, that's kinda the most efficient layout for it. And so, you know, no, that, the rock that's out there in the temporary turnaround right now will end up probably hauling over to our lot over off Emerald. So.
I mean, I know that I talked to Lynn about, uh, the one in Southwest Country Estates and Lynn had talked to, uh, to Phil. Phil didn't have a problem with two lots in there. And they, the hundred, a little less than a hundred and fifty. I think we actually provide for anything under a hundred feet, uh, and Phil, like I say, Phil didn't have a problem with that. If he does have a problem with this, I think we probably gonna have to go with his recommendation.
That was, that was late. As I remember, they're like a hundred and nine foot wide lot, I can go grab it.
Yeah, they're, they're all little lots and they're about a hundred and ten feet, aren't they?
Yeah, they're nice sized, yeah.
Hundred and five, hundred and ten, somewhere around that.
Yeah, and the, I think they're, I think they're sort of sketched in there that within that, there'd be a temporary turnaround, but then if you sold any of those lots at the end, then that would go away. Does that make a bit of sense?
The only thing that does, and I don't have any real objection to doing it within it, other than the fact that, uh, you know, it, it almost prohibits you from selling that last one until you hang it out.
And that's not something, I mean, I would rather, if we're gonna do that, I would rather just do it on, on my ground and then be done, go on and knock the trees down and.
Cause you're gonna lose seventy foot in there for, um, the street and, um, uh, easements, whatever that's extended regardless.
Fifty.
Well, fifty foot road with another ten on each side for the, uh, utility easements. So you basically lose seventy feet through there for trees.
What's?
Cause the trees will come out of the easement also.
What's thirty two and then nine?
You've got a fifty foot right away plus two ten foot easements, that's what gets cleared.
I don't believe you got the two ten foot easements, huh? I think it's fifty foot and then eighteen, nine each side.
Well, now that's, you got thirty two foot street, then then, then nine feet on each side is what your street right away is. But then you have utility easements on the outside of that.
All the utility easements have been in that street, in that right away.
All the utilities may have been in the street, but I think there are, I can look here.
Yes, there's ten foot utility easement. I'm looking at the plat from the P and Z minutes.
Right.
I mean, the, uh, the.
Oh yes, there are ten foot utility easements on each side of the, uh, the street right away, so you've got a total of seventy feet.
So seventy feet.
And the cul-de-sac would actually carry a little bit beyond that without a whole lot. You, you, what you're actually, your, your right away for your temporary cul-de-sac goes beyond that, but you probably don't go beyond that for what you actually put in the cul-de-sac.
Sure.
I think it's, might extend a couple of feet beyond it, but that's. Isn't that cul-de-sac supposed to be thirty feet, uh, thirty eight feet?
See, for some reason forty two was.
Thirty, or is it forty, it might be forty, I don't remember.
I think it is forty two.
I know, I know they're bigger here than what they are.
Yeah, I think that's correct, forty, I believe it's.
I think it's forty two.
Forty one or forty two. But you're not gonna go ahead and put the street in before you want this plat approved?
If, if the weather cooperated, we'd have a street in right now.
Okay. I mean, I, I have no problem with going ahead, uh, and, and approving the plat, I just, you know, my, my, I thought that you were trying to get this all with the trust and done, so you got it approved, so you didn't have to go with, and do the, uh, not the bonding, but the, uh, guarantees.
Yeah, I think, I think the goal was to get at most of the, uh, letter of credit on the sidewalks, is what we did in the first two, right?
Yeah, yeah. So, uh, you're, you're going, uh, gotta go ahead with the, uh, the guarantee on the street and everything then?
And, and whatever.
What we probably do is not fully, fully make an ordinance of it, is what we did in the past, and then come back.
So we really don't need to?
Well, that's, yeah, that's kinda, so do we, do we?
I, I mean.
Because if you guys fully do, go on and make an ordinance, do the reading and all that, then I'll have to provide you by the way that your all's thing says.
Right.
I'll provide you a letter.
And you, you would just assume not to, that's why you just shouldn't delay the approval of this until you have the street in place.
Okay, so we could, we could, uh, if we recessed the meeting, then we'd be till December or whatever the first, right?
Well, I don't know that we would need to recess it at this point, because it depends on how long it is before you get the street in.
Right.
It'll be before Jan, December thirty first. Concrete goes up twelve dollars a yard after December thirty first.
But we can recess the meeting until, uh, the, the December, uh, uh, first meeting and then, uh, if we need to recess it following week, we can. My guess is it'll probably be the, uh, the regular meeting before it gets done, considering the weather.
December first is the, is the.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, if you're fine with waiting until the regular meeting in December.
Yeah.
And then we'll see where we go from there.
We could, we could recess till then, we could actually table it.
We could just table it till then.
Fifteenth of December?
Yeah.
That gives you a month to get it in and, and, and depending on what the weather is, you may or may not have it in at that point. But we can always prove it at that point if we do.
Let's follow me.
Okay. I'll get you all the.
Yeah.
My new shed.
If, if you could PDF it, the best thing to do is PDF it today, but one less hand in the cookie jar is probably better.
Thank you.
Alright. That's all, that's, that's all we need for tonight, and we don't need to put that on the agenda for Saturday.
Right.
Okay.
We have two more things.
Yeah.
Report on the survey of citizen survey.
Well, uh, my goal, I'm just gonna sort of go over some, some stuff orally, but I will have a final written report, uh, by Saturday. We got, we had a hundred and twenty five surveys turned in, um, and we had a variety of, no single question was answered, you know, all a hundred and twenty five surveys. People skipped for one reason or another. So, uh, but, um, for the, the, for garbage collection, there were a hundred and twenty two surveys. Uh, no one responded they didn't know about garbage service, and we had a hundred and twenty one out of a hundred and twenty two were excellent or good. So that's, that's the good news. That is the one that, that had the highest favorable opinion, followed by library, fire, water, and electric. So, um, and, uh, the, but the bottom five, the one that had the least favorable was sidewalks. Um, thirty seven percent, uh, found it excellent or good of those who registered an opinion. There were a hundred and twenty responses, five said they didn't know, um, and so.
Didn't know we had sidewalks?
Uh, didn't know, well, no, well, I, you know, don't, no, don't know, I, they don't know whether they're good, fair, or poor. So those, uh, a hundred and fifteen that registered a, uh, opinion, only forty three said they were excellent or good. And that's, apparently my battery wasn't lasting very long, so I'll talk fast. Uh, above that was nuisance abatement. Above that, just above that was street maintenance with, uh, forty five percent favorable or excellent or good. Uh, above that was storm drainage with forty seven percent favorable, um, excellent or good that is. And then snow removal, uh, was getting pretty close to, um, was above half, thought we did well, sixty, sixty three. So we have four that people really didn't like. You had to go down to the, 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 um, you know, the, the top ten or fifteen were ninety percent or above. So I think that the important thing to know is people do like the services where we give a pretty favorable opinion of, uh, city services. And there were a couple where there's a high number of don't knows, uh, fire, but that, you know, if you don't have a fire, we had, uh, twenty five don't knows on fire, twenty nine on recreation programs, and if you're not signing up for stuff. And then the, the next one down, recycling was twenty four percent, which may indicate that people don't know about the recycling program. Recreation programs, recycling programs, I think we've advertised them. We also asked about where you get your information and, um, the, uh, We also asked about where you get your information, and, um, the, uh, the, the Central Fire Side Guard and, um, the city newsletter were the, were the top two. Central, the city newsletter was top, but you have to remember the survey was sent out with the city newsletter. So, there might be some, it could be called sampling bias. So, the central fireside guard would finish next, um, followed by the city website. Um, and, um, the next one was, uh, after city website was TV. We have almost no way of getting information, you know, without, it's, unless we, unless something bad happens, we can't usually, we don't usually get the TV coming up here to come up here with your story. Um, there were some people who put, um, Facebook is a high priority, but there are also several that said, no way. Um, there was, you know, so there was, there is a variety of different ways that people are ready to get their information. Um, so, anyway, these are some things we can talk about, and I'll give you a written report and summary of it, um, at the retreat. It was based, like, we, we took a lot of this out of a survey that was in an old survey, how-to-do surveys book of mine. It was based on some, something that's, uh, is done nationally every year, it's changed a lot. That book was printed, um, in the nineteen nineties, but the, the questions for that same survey are, I, I don't know if we'd be able to get the national data to compare it to, I was guessing what they're saying to, but I'll give it a shot. Uh, you, you, you have to pay to get into that survey hands-on, so.
I, I would be willing to bet that if you only put the survey on the website, that, that would be the top way that people found it.
Well, it's, yeah, and so, there was some, there was some sampling bias there. Um, so, I, I sent an email, uh, an email just before this meeting, I don't know how many of you have seen it, with, uh, potential topics for the, uh, the retreat. Um, uh, one of the top ones would be budget, um, and how in-depth that will go is, has a little bit to do with how much information we can gather and send you guys. Um, but, you know, just general trends, you know, general trends and general priorities of council. Um, we also, I also like to look at trash service. Um, so, the number one thing I, I would like to look at there in terms of decision, or, well, we won't make any decisions at this meeting, it's all for discussion, but the number one thing, kind of guidance I'd like to get from you guys, whether or not we want to, first of all, uh, the assumption is we want to continue doing trash service, it is our most popular service. But, um, it's, uh, um, there's a couple of, we, we may be too nice, that might be the information there. We will, do we want to get people to, if they're going to put out a large amount of trash after moving out of a department or something like that, do we want to do special pickup with a charge? I think that would be, yeah, rates, yeah, when we look at how much, how much our costs, our costs are going up, we mentioned that last, the last public works would probably be utility. So, uh, the rest of the items, if you guys have stuff that you want to talk about, um, shoot me an e- reply the email. It's, I want it to be, I'm willing to, to, uh, guide the discussion, lead the discussion to the extent you want me to. I'm also willing to have this be your chance to talk about projects you'd like to see happen over the next year or two, five, and, so. And that's.
The details, I, I have the copy of the memo you sent, it is this Saturday from nine AM to then three hours.
Right. I mean, if we get, if we go through all this topic in two and a half hours, uh, you know, you're, you're free. Free to go.
And, and you have in, in all, in boldface, I will bring breakfast, dress as casual, jeans and sweatshirts would be fine.
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
Yeah, Michael.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not going to wear a tie. I hope no one's too terribly disappointed.
I don't want to either.
Yeah.
Okay.
It was an open meeting, of course, so.
Real quick, before I go to Merritt, are you done?
I'm done.
Okay. Uh, to answer your question about the efficiency, I looked up both of those units, and they were both eighty percent efficient.
Thank you.
Uh, the Lennox is two hundred BTU, two hundred thousand BTUs. The Starling was two hundred and fifty thousand BTUs, but they're both eighty percent efficient. So.
I, I don't have anything, I've been working with Manon on these things that he's been talking about, but I don't have anything further.
Okay.
He's doing the best he can.
Have you, have you looked up anything on an ad ordinance for it?
Well, my understanding is that there's not any rush for this, it's what, what I've been told, uh, that.
Except, uh, we would like it in place before Anchorage Fest, probably before Anchorage Fest.
Yeah.
Not wait until last, so that it can be advertised.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, maybe the first year. What month are you talking about then?
Uh, probably April, but, uh, no later than there.
Okay.
To have an ordinance in place by April.
Yeah.
That way it can be advertised that, uh, this is what will happen. When's our, uh, when's the loop newsletter go out?
It'd be April first. It'll be April first.
Yeah, so we had it done in March, that would.
That would be nice, because you mentioned in the newsletter, because that's one way of getting things out.
Yeah. According to the survey, that's.
Okay. What is adopted by March meeting?